Thank you, and good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay. We had a closed session on a number of topics that we had to go over, but we're here now. So we'll start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with our additions/deletions. Joe?
Oh, okay.
If you would.
Yes. If I could delete the discussion item for tonight. We did discuss that, and we are going to have a study session regarding these issues, so that would be...
More proper.
More effective than having a discussion item.
All right, I'll support that to add or to delete. Any questions on that? I don't think so. All in favor of deleting that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the discussion item is deleted for tonight.
Save you some time tonight.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Supervisor, I would like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda to award an emergency contract to expert heating and cooling. Oh, I'm sorry. I am making a motion to add as an action item, replace existing furnace and AC unit at Waters Edge facility.
Do I have a support?
Support?
And that is simply, it's an emergency contract to fix the AC unit at Waters Edge.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Not hearing any. We have a motion to add a replacement of existing furnace and AC unit at Waters Edge facility. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That will be action item number four. And I would like to make a motion to add the authorization of filing a lawsuit as discussed in our closed session.
Second?
Thank you, Joe. We're all familiar with what went on there. Any other comments, though, by the board? Seeing none, we have a motion to add action item to authorize filing of a lawsuit. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that will be action item number five. Thank you.
He agrees.
Was that in favor? I couldn't quite...
In favor, in favor.
I think he said aye.
I think so, it sounded like. All right. That brings us to a presentation regarding GI Safe Key Program. Susan, take it away.
Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. I know you've got a full agenda. Obviously, I'm not the main event tonight, so I appreciate you giving me this time. I'll try and make it somewhat brief, as, you know, we're already late into the session. I just wanted to bring up, bring to light, the GI Safe Key Program. This was created and pushed out during COVID. And how it came about is we had a run, we had a medical run, and we had, well, actually, it was a welfare check on the individual. He happened to be an elderly individual. He happened to be in the Hawthorne condos and the ones that were on the second floor and all screened in. It was from somebody out of state, saying he was speaking to him earlier. He wasn't feeling good. This gentleman lived alone. He was elderly and had no relatives around that we knew of, and we just didn't have enough to break the door down, right? We didn't have enough information at the time. Finally, we did get enough information to break the door down, and sadly, he passed away. If, you know, if we could have got in there earlier, who knows? So I came to the management at the time and said, "I would love to create an online program or an online database for people to be able to sign up and provide us, at the very least, a key holder, emergency contact." We do have a lot of elderly people on this island, so that would be very helpful. The management at the time let me run with it. I have my prior life as an IT professional, so I thought I could come up with something that was self-sustaining, and it would be cost-effective, and so I did a lot of research. I put in about 80 hours of my own time, because it was that important to me, so we came up with this program. This is the icon for it. I took the time to trademark it. If anybody has been through trademarking, that's not easy with the federal government, but I didn't want anybody to have, to use this icon and it be under false pretenses. So this is the icon I came up with. Again, it's an online database to capture key contacts, emergency contacts for Grozeal residents and Grozeal businesses, and that includes church and schools and any private organizations. We call them, if you sign up, you're a member, so you sign up as a membership. Alls you need is an email, and it's very, there's limited information that you are, that you're required to fill in. We do have, I will push out periodic emails to say, "Hey, make sure that your, all your information is still up to date, but you won't receive garbage emails from me. The data is not sold. It stays within the police department, so it doesn't go anywhere, and it's completely secure." This is old data, but when I was doing my research, obviously, it's from 2000. This is the households at the time. And when I was doing my research at the time, again, this was back, I started the research back in 2020, very early on, and it was about 84 listed businesses, including church, private clubs, so on. Again, old data, but this would be the data that we would look at, and this would be helpful in these runs that we have. You can see we have a lot of medical runs, a lot of time, because we have the benefit of having a wonderful volunteer police or fire department. Sometimes, we are the first ones on scene. Again, some more sample data, and then a little bit updated data from the beginning of this year to end of May. So you can see the numbers that we have, a lot of medicals, we have what we call Lyftocys, we have alarms, welfare checks, and so on, that it would be really beneficial to have that emergency contact information, or if we have key codes. Some people do sign up for, and give us key code information. If residents or businesses aren't comfortable with that, like I said, at the very least, that they can provide us a key holder that they're comfortable having that information with, and that would be very beneficial. When I researched the solution, I wanted something that we weren't going to create from scratch. I knew I could find something, again, based on my old IT world, that something was already built, it was cost-effective, and then, you know, you'd be able to go on your phone to do it and handle a user base of at least 10,000. We are not that high. We're approximately a little under 200 right now. Again, when it came to fruition, it was during COVID time, and it didn't get a lot of PR. We had more important issues to tackle at the time. This is, again, I've already addressed these. This is what I needed to, those are the things that I needed for it to work effectively. And again, with the reports that come out of this for our dispatchers and anybody that sits on our desk, it comes out in an Excel format, so it's nothing more that they, nothing new that they had to learn. They're already familiar with an Excel spreadsheet, so it was, it worked all around. I'm not going to bore you with all this, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that in my research that I covered any of the security. The security is a big concern, that somebody can't hack into it. So this just goes, this is just addressing what's underneath the layers of the security and what technology it sits on. Again, more security stuff. If anybody's interested, feel free to reach out to me. But I just, the point being, I just wanted you to see that I covered the research and make sure it was super secure. Nothing is 100% secure, obviously. Even our government can't keep things 100% secure, but I wanted to make sure that we can keep it as secure as possible. This is the site. It's very simple. It looks like... Yep. You're welcome. So this is the site. You see, we have, you can sign up as a resident, or you can sign up as business. It's completely 100% free. You can cancel at any time. You can edit it at any time. You need an email address, which makes your record unique to you. So you can, if you forget your password, you can go on here and you can reset your password, and so on and so forth. The resident, again, it's completely free. Simple questions. All of the asterisk ones are required, but again, like I said before, we just, at the very bare minimum, if we want an emergency contact or a key holder that will say, "Hey, we can pull this up. If your neighbor is checking on you, and hey, I haven't seen this person in a while," we can look it up and say, "Oh, he's got a daughter in Allen Park," and we can contact the person, "Hey, have you heard from him? Can you get in?" And so on and so forth. I'm sure you get the idea. But it's very simple. You just fill this out, and you hit join, and that's all. You get a confirmation that you're joined, and that's really all there is to it. Again, I wanted to be brief for the sake of time, so I'll open it up to any questions from you all.
I just have a quick one. So the intent of the database is that a friend or relative or whomever appointed of an individual would enter the home alongside police, and police wouldn't enter the home independently of that, right?
Correct. So, for example, we wouldn't just walk up and enter the, it's really in case of emergency, right? We want to, we want to avoid having to break down doors, right? So if there was a welfare check, or just two weeks ago, we had an individual, she was, you know, on the floor by herself. Her husband was in the hospital. They were both elderly. She's like, "I'm on the floor. I don't know." Luckily, we did find an open door, but she was telling us that all the doors were locked, and she didn't know what to do. We did find a way to get in, but in that instance, if she had somebody that could provide us emergency contact or had a key, it would have been super helpful. Thankfully, we didn't have to break down the door, but we don't want to break down the doors if we don't have to. So that's really why. It's not willy-nilly, we just walk into anybody's house, absolutely not.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a statement, if you guys?
Absolutely, Joe. Go ahead.
Susan, I just want to say, first off, thank you. I know that I listened to this at the police commission meeting, and I gave somewhat of the same statement. And as 10 years of the police chief, we had just kind of a quasi-computerized program with this. Nothing like this. It was obviously nothing like this, and I'm glad you say maybe you didn't take so many doors down, because we did. We took a lot of doors down, and I had a carpenter on my speed dial, and I did pay for the door. And if we were wrong, I paid for the door. But there's no better gift than giving somebody a second chance in life, and this program will do it. You know, unfortunately, we had to do it the old-fashioned way, and then they would call me and say, "What do you think?" Well, I never said no. And we took down numerous doors, and that's, I mean, you're correct. And thank you, though, for taking it on your own, doing this, because you saved one life. It's worth it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So thank you very much for everything you've done, though.
Thank you, thank you. I will add, too, it's very minimal cost. It costs a township $1,000 a year, and that's really nothing in the grand scheme of things. We do still have these, if you all see these, and people do still put them on the refrigerator. However, they're only good if we get inside the home. And then also, if you sign up and request, we also have the window clings that you can put on your window that automatically alerts us to say, "Hey, I'm a member of the GI Safe Key Program," and that's just a quick, you know, focal point to say, "Okay, I'm a member, and we should look there." We will look there, but this is a quick saying, "Hey, they're members. Look it up," so.
Susan, is there anything else we can do to promote, to get this word out? Is there's anything better that we can do to get the word out on this?
I know when I presented to the police commission, I think it was last summer, they did, the police, we did a big push. We did some mailers out, and that was actually successful. We know that we don't get a huge audience here. It is on GI TV already. And I do give out, at every opportunity, I give out a business card. Like just yesterday, we were on a run, and I said, "Hey, how computer savvy are you? I know your mom lives here alone. Please sign up for this." So at every opportunity that we go on runs, that we see somebody there, say, "Please sign up for this. You can quit at any time. It's free." So again, just share the word. That's all we ask. And then if you run into individuals, I'm sure you have neighbors that would fall into this situation, and absolutely...
Fall, I like that. They would fall.
But yeah, so spread the word, word of mouth, and like I said, I think we've used every means available to us right now.
Then we'll just keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, just a follow-up to what you were saying. Susan, I don't know if you want me to bring us to the police commission, but do you think, I know, and I thank you for, we recommended some kind of mailer to go out, and we did, and hopefully, you got some hits on that. Do you think because of the turnaround, just say, on the people on Grozeal, that maybe every year, every two, do you think it'd be worth it if we requested it? Because I'm not sure how much it costs for that mailer.
I don't know either, but Doug did mention that he was gonna...
I mean, we do have different funds, I know that'll pay. But I think it would be a good idea to put, this is really an incredible idea, to put it out every year, maybe in a mailer, just because of the turnover of individuals out here?
I was pleasantly surprised at how successful the mailer was, and I know that Doug is planning to do another push, so I...
Okay, so how about I'll just bring it up at the police commission, if you think that's good?
Sure, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was so excited about having Susan come up and do that. I did this again. Approval of agenda. So I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
That was something worth getting excited about.
All right, all right, all right. Next, public comment. Three minutes, if, on agenda items. Anybody? Anybody? Oh, Chris, that isn't you raising your hand, is it? All right. At this time, no public comment. We may see them at the end. So also, I failed to mention, but as you notice, as you look up here, one of us is missing. Mr. Nadeau is under the weather and is not, hasn't, wasn't in today and isn't here tonight. We hope he gets well soon. Unfortunately, with him not being here, we're going to have to fill in for him. So I will, I will make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 23-028, which consists of the minutes of the May 22, 2023 regular meeting, minutes of the May 31, 2023 special meeting, the check register dated through June 2, 2023, a community rec commission appointment, approval of the Grozeal Yacht Club's 2023 fireworks display, zoning board of appeals member approval, consent for, motion for the defined benefit plan adoption agreement slash MERS healthcare savings program participation agreement, and approval of the 33rd District Court financial report.
Do you need a second?
I do.
All right.
Thank you, Joe. Any comments on anything?
Yeah, no need to pull it out, but I did want to just make a comment about the defined benefit plan adoption agreement, the MERS healthcare savings program. I just noticed that we're moving more towards a defined contribution plan with the newer hires, and I just wanted to name that. And I was happy about that, and that both the union and the township are moving in that direction. I think that's going to help us long-term, so I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, and this is the participation agreement that they would sign. It's not the plan itself or anything. And although, you know, we've changed it, people do seem to like the defined benefit plan for, I think, for security reasons, and there are, as we said, as we made the changes, we can make changes and give them a defined benefit plan, but also make it less expensive for us, so it's a good thing. Other comments?
I do have a question. On page 11 of the check registers, check number 80076, we paid $700 to Jay's Taxidermy. I'm just curious what we're...
Oh, that's a good one, yeah.
But we're taxidermied.
We've done that before.
What page was that on?
Page 11 of the PDF.
Get your response on that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm just curious. There's like a giant trout around or something.
Probably animal shelter?
More likely animal shelter.
Ah.
Yeah, so, okay. Other questions?
Carl Jamison? Carl just said that Julie has sometimes gone through that for some miscellaneous reasons, so educational purposes.
Last one was a coyote.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing that there are none, we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda 23-028, which consists of the following: minutes of the May 22, 2023 regular meeting, minutes of the May 31, 2023 special meeting, check register dated through June 2, 2023, community recreation commission appointment, 2023 Grozeal Yacht Club fireworks display approval, zoning board of appeals member approval, defined benefit adoption agreement, and approval of the 33rd District Court financial report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So that passes. So we have that. Well, I guess there's really nothing else today, is there? Anything of import? All right, action items. Mr. Bletcher?
I move, based upon the recommendation of the Grozeal Fire Commission, that the Grozeal Township Board hereby appoint John Camilleri as Grozeal Township full-time fire chief, effective immediately.
Second?
Okay. Comments from the board? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. And please, all bear with me a little bit. I know I have a reputation, maybe not quite the extent of Carl's, but I wanted to say this, for me, this has not been an easy decision, and it has involved the consultation with many different people in the community. As you know from past meetings, we did kind of have a messy process, but as usual, I think we got there in the end. And as Kyle also reminded me, I was a supporter of John early on in this process, to come on as a part-time interim chief for a longer period of time, you know, to actually formalize the agreement, and then things got complicated. So what really made my decision solidify John was hearing your interview with the Fire Commission last week, Thursday. You answered a lot of questions that I had, that people had brought to me as well, but I know you also answered the questions of the commission, and you answered the questions that Carl raised to you as well. I think it was just a very strong interview, and I'm glad that it took place, and the effect it had on me. So I want to congratulate you from me for that. And having served on the Fire Commission in the past, and having recently resigned from that position, there is something that I think is, played more on my mind with this decision than who was going to serve the chief. I think any of the candidates that we interviewed, any one of them, like you, would have done a good job, would have come up to the challenge, but you had maybe the home-field advantage, we could say, but also, you gave me to understand how our department, as a volunteer department, is so different from many of the career departments in the bigger communities around us. And I kind of wish I'd had that education maybe a little bit sooner. But as you know, there is an 800-pound gorilla in the room, and it's not the interview process, or where you live, or who you are. It's the relationship that the township administration, the township government has with the fire association, and how that relationship plays out in the ability of its chief and officers to actually manage the department. And I am hoping, as we move forward, to me, it's vital that we clarify, that we codify that relationship, whatever it turns out to be. Right now, as you pointed out in your interview, the association plays a social and fundraising role, but we understand it also helps determine who your officers are, and it takes away some of that control that you would have as a chief determining the progression of your team. If the community wants to keep it that way, then we need to openly have these conversations and make those decisions, and build in accountability, because the association and the township have no real relationship to each other, except through the fact that, you know, we have volunteer firefighters who participate in both. So I am hoping that you, but also your team, will work together to help us clarify that relationship, so that in the future, we don't have dysfunction, so that in the future, the new volunteers that come on board will know how the system works, that we'll have training programs in place, et cetera, and that each group will know how it fits into that puzzle. And so, to me, I think that was something that was important to be said. And as we move forward, I know you know Carl is a good communicator, you are a good communicator. I think that we will always have to be communicating back and forth. And I want to reach out to the association membership and leadership as well, saying, you know, "You play a role in the township, so communicate with the board, communicate with the administration." The department depends on the government and the taxpayers for its funding, so there is accountability that is there. The taxpayers adore you for what you do for our community. You are very important to all of us, and we want to make sure that in that role, you are taken care of, you know, as volunteers, as employees, and as our, for lack of a better word, heroes, right? You are the people that run into the fire when the rest of us run out. You're the people that run in to rescue someone who is ill when the rest of us can't do anything. And so that is a very, very, very important role to all of us. So John, I want to hear with, give you my vote, and hope that you and your team will do as you say and make us proud.
Other comments? Okay, there, yeah. Mr. Bletcher?
First of all, I want to thank all of the, I want to thank all of the volunteers for all of the work that they do. I had the privilege of sitting in on the training session with BLS and CPR accreditation. We reviewed that. It is terrific to see participation there. We're virtually, entire department comes in, including several retirees, simply to brush up and get the further education reinforcement on what they have. The job that you ladies and gentlemen do frankly scares the hell out of me. I cannot imagine having to make a split-second decision, not so much with fire, but with healthcare. The great majority of your calls are for healthcare. You have to make an immediate assessment. You have to be correct. You have to decide... You have to make an immediate assessment. You have to be correct. You have to decide what treatment is going to be provided, and you're already starting to send the information to the hospital that's going to be receiving one or more patients. You also did that during COVID, which was an incredible challenge to everybody. And I thank you for all of the good work that you've done. My family has received services, friends have received services, neighbors have received services, and I think frankly, this department is second to none in the state. I don't pretend to have a survey showing how much you do versus what other departments do, but the business model that we have in this community is absolutely incredible. I looked at the resumes, all 28 resumes that were submitted, all 28 applications. And frankly, when we tried to distill that down, and the committee was able to come up with six, there were interviews that were done, and then we participated in the interviews of the two finalists, I'm going to refer to David and Steve, and I looked at those two finalists and thought, oh my God, these guys have so many credentials. And the first question that went through my mind, when John had decided that he wanted to become involved and considered for the chief's position, how are we going to bring John up if he's chosen to that position, to that level? The flip side of that question is, how do we bring those guys to the level of the chief of police for the Grozeal Township? How do we get them to integrate into...
Fire.
Sorry, fire. How do we get them to integrate into the community's long tradition, rich history of service? How do we get to do that? John interviewed, interviewed very well. I am comforted by the fact that John is going to be able to participate and lead the fire department, it's my expectation, to a higher level. I remember when Joe Miller was the chief, and then Ken Fisher, and then Duncan, and then Rusty. And I look at where you've got, John, you have some pretty big shoes to fill. I'm confident you can do it. You're going to be a full-time chief. I don't know how you're going to be able to do law and fire. I wish you well, but you also have some good people behind you. I previously mentioned Kevin Langley. I've mentioned Chris Davenport, and I'll mention Tim Lorraine again. You also have, depending upon the time of day, 17 other, 16 other people behind you. Lean on them. I expect that you're going to be able to take us to a different level. I'm looking forward to seeing the training that we have, it appears to me, been deferring. I want this department to be second to none anywhere, and it's my expectation, my hope, and I fully expect to hold you accountable to see that that happens. You have some good people behind you. You have the potential to be an excellent leader at that level. You've done very well throughout the department. John, I think you're going to do very well. I wish you the best. I wish the department the very best. And I'm asking that Chris, and Tim, and Kevin, and every member of the department, stand behind you and make this department the very best it can be. And I wish you well. And thank you for stepping up and making this possible. Nothing further?
Anyone else?
Well, then I will chime in. First of all, Mr. Nedu is not here tonight, but if he were here and he were voting, I can tell you that he would be voting for Mr. Camilleri. He, I wanted to put that out, and I had talked to him about that, and he had no problem with me telling you that. I will say, you know, in all honesty, I have probably more reservations than anyone else here about things. I too read all the resumes, and certainly the ones that made it to the interview stage and made it to the end were very, very good. And the, I went to the interviews, and I was impressed with all the interviews, including John's. I did, again, in all honesty, I have to say that I did hear some talking around issues rather than answering the questions. The, I have, I do have the same concern as Carl mentioned. I don't know how you do a law practice and work here from 8 to 4:30, five days a week. But that isn't going to be my problem, that will be your problem. And despite, first of all, I truly respect the views, and the board members who haven't spoken have spoken before. We know where they stand, and I respect their positions and their opinions. And having worked with John in the interim, I think, I certainly think John and I, and John and the board, and John and the township can certainly work together. So I too am in favor. And with that, if there are no other questions, I will find my motion.
I would just like to have it noted for the record that I spoke less than Uta did.
Well, you did until you just said that. So we have a motion before us based upon the recommendation of the Grozeal Fire Commission, that the Grozeal Township Board hereby appoints John Camilleri as Grozeal Township Fire Chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will say, I will say right now, since you're in limbo right now, you're no longer interim, so you are Mr. Camilleri. Before we move on to action item number two, I would like the clerk to give the oath of office to... So we have Chief Camilleri.
Jim, can I ask you one question before we do this?
Yes.
So he'll be meeting with Derek then, and you, you too?
Yes, and that will...
I mean, whatever you...
Be informed of what's, you know, what the details are, yes.
That's the next step.
Yeah, that's the next step.
I have 20 bucks with Kevin that I will not take the podium.
Well, John, we're not going to let you take the podium.
We'll do it sideways.
Okay. I just can't speak in it. That's the bad.
Do you want to come up here, too?
I will come up there.
Okay. So we'll fill this in.
Okay.
But we'll read the oath together, and then you will sign right here. And it's my honor to do this, because it's one of the reasons you get to be clerk, is you get to swear at people, swear people in. I know, bad joke. So right hand up? All right. I do solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state...
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Fire Chief...
As the Office of Fire Chief.
In and for the township...
In and for the township.
Of Grozeal...
Of Grozeal.
County of Wayne.
County of Wayne.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
And according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. You are now chief.
Thank you.
I want to make sure the people hear this. Chief Camilleri, it is with, it is an honor for me to present to you, if I can get them out, your badge as chief...
Thank you.
And your lapel pin.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the sign?
Did I need to sign?
Seal. Seal the deal right here. Fancy big pen. Thank you, Nicole. Margie, team, everybody, thank you for coming and being a part of this.
Nicole, you're going to have your hands full now.
I know.
Thank you very much.
I already do, and I'm happy to do it.
Oh, shoot. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome, John. Thank you. All right, Mr. Nedu, it's up to... Oh, that's right, you're not here. The action item number two is a motion based upon a recommendation from the Grozeal Public Service Commission and the Grozeal Township Engineers that the Grozeal Township Board hereby approve a change order to its contract with Asphalt Specialists, Inc., to add $672,972 in additional work as outlined in the attached change order documents.
Second?
Thank you. And Derek, I'm going to turn it over to you, because that's all David gave me.
Sure, sure. As was mentioned in previous meetings, the bids came in substantially lower than the engineers' estimates for the asphalt paving portion of the road improvement work that we're doing in 2023. So with those additional savings, we would like to add some portions of roads on the island here. The DPS Commission has a priority list of roads that they would like to see worked on based upon the criticality of those roads, the condition of those roads, and the various stretches of Church Road, west of Meridian, a portion of West River Road by the wastewater treatment plant, and four intersections were those sections of road that are, and are being recommended to you this evening to add on to the scope of work. And that total for those additional areas is $672,972. A copy of the budget is listed in the action item, which provides to you the bond revenue, the millage revenue, and then also the existing and planned expenditures for the various road work we're doing in 2023. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be sure to answer those.
Doesn't appear we have any questions. Okay, seeing none. We have a motion based upon the recommendation from the Grozeal Public Service Commission and the Grozeal Township Engineers. The Grozeal Township Board hereby approves a change order to its contract with Asphalt Specialists, Inc., to add $672,972 in additional work as outlined in the attached change order documents. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, so we get more road work done. Very good.
Actually, it was very interesting to see how they're progressing down West River Road, past Church, and down toward Horse Mill. And after John's interview, actually on Thursday night, I got an opportunity to talk to Gordon Miles Jr., and he gave us a little bit of a history, how his dad, Gordon Miles Sr., actually first developed the process, the early process of what they're doing now to pull off the old road service before they put on a new road surface. So it was just very interesting, and it's just good to see happening. It's going to make a big difference to the people driving West River on a daily basis to that area.
Yeah, West, I mean, we will have West River done this, I mean, this year, West River will be a completely new road. Over the last couple of years, we've done that. But I am absolutely excited about this road program, because when we get through with it, Grozeal will be a completely different place road-wise, so it's great. Joe, action item number three.
Hey, the recommendation is to seek approval to purchase a patrol vehicle and equipment for the Grozeal Police Department.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this one? It's pretty straightforward.
I think you might just want to say the financial impact.
Yeah, should I?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, read the...
Yeah. The Grozeal Police Department patrol vehicle number 163 is close to retirement. A pursuit-rated 2023 Ford Explorer has been ordered. The cost of the vehicle is $44,595, and was budgeted for $46,000. The additional vehicle equipment is quoted at $13,256, and that's through the Herkimer Radio Service. The equipment amount budgeted for a vehicle was $30,000. The purchase of the vehicle unit falls under the projected cost.
Yeah, very good.
I got to be honest with you, I'm just...
Yeah, that's okay. And her...
Vehicles is ridiculous, but we have to do it, obviously.
Yep, yep. And we're limited in who we can go after, and...
Well, that's the state bid. That's the Michigan bid, so it's not, you know, we, any Ford dealership they went to, the price is exact through the state, just so the people know that.
Okay. And just so everybody knows, Herkimer Radio Service has been in business for a long, long time. They do a lot of what this is, so they're, they know what they're doing also. So, and we really did well on that versus what was budgeted, 13 versus 30. I'm all for that, so. Other questions or comments on that? Seeing none. We have a motion to approve the purchase of a patrol vehicle and the equipment for the Grozeal Police Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Joe and the guys down there, you get a new vehicle. Okay. Uta?
Hopefully, they will be able to use that new vehicle to pursue people down the new roads. Yeah. I would like to make a motion to award the contract for the, replacing the existing furnace and AC unit at Waters Edge facility on an emergency basis to expert heating and cooling. For, it is the low bid for the price of $7,500.
Support?
As you can see, the packet that we did give out unfortunately today at the last minute, but again, this is an emergency, we wanted to be able to act on this. There were three bids or three quotes received and sought, and this is the lowest bid. And of course, we have experience with expert heating and cooling, and so I think this is a good way for us to go, and they'll be able to handle this ASAP.
Okay.
Question? I know this was given out today, but this was included in the COVID funding, right? Or is this separate from that?
Something separate, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
This was unexpected.
This is one of those true emergencies, yes. Other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion to award a contract to expert heating and cooling to replace the furnace and AC unit at the Waters Edge facility. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Let's get that furnace and AC fixed. All right. And finally, a motion to authorize the filing of a lawsuit regarding the damage to our water main on near Meridian and the bridge work.
Support?
We all second it.
Okay.
I support.
You want to stay even, I understand. Okay, and the board knows about this. Derek, I'll just ask you to quickly, if you could summarize what happened down there.
Yeah, while they were running a piece of cofferdam sheet piling back, I believe in the end of April, the contractor for the county came in contact with our 16-inch water main that runs alongside the bridge. The township obviously contends that it's the contractor's fault for that damage. They have claimed that they aren't at fault. We've consulted with our attorney, and the action before you is the recommended action from legal to pursue the contractor for damages. So that is what you're voting on this evening.
Okay. Any questions of anyone? Not hearing or seeing any? We have a motion to authorize filing of a lawsuit rega- Not hearing or seeing any? We have a motion to authorize filing of a lawsuit regarding damage to our water main. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will be doing that through our attorneys. And that is the end of our action items. Next on the agenda is our public comment. Three minutes, any topic? Greg, I just saw you moving the quickest. How are you tonight?
Good, good. Greg Carmison, 212-280 East River. First of all, I'd like to applaud the board tonight. I think you did make a great decision on appointing John Camilleri as a Grozeal Fire Chief. And as I know Clerk O'Connor said, sometimes a process is messy, and I think maybe it's a little more than messy here with how this and some of the other appointments have been handled. But I know that that is on the discussion agenda for a study session, and I think that would be something that I look forward to hearing a good discussion about the process. But in any event, I think you made a great decision tonight. Also, Island Fest was a great time. I congratulate Clerk O'Connor again and the Recreation Commission. Chad Novak, the chairman, did a great job on Island Fest. I think there were a lot of people there having a great time. A couple other things that I wanted to mention. On the Wayne County Bridge, Parkway Bridge, I would like to hear an update on the status, so that I know Supervisor Budney, you've talked a little bit about this, about the fact that there's an ongoing study, and I would like to hear a little more about where we are with that study. This is Wayne County's contract to look at the repairs and the plans for repairs, and, you know, I think we're over six months, maybe nine months into that or even longer, and I don't think we've actually got a status report from the county. And I know that they did promise at some point to come to the Township Hall and have an opportunity for citizens to hear what their plans are, so.
I will mention that in my...
Okay, great. And as a somewhat related issue, you may know that, you may have heard that the Riverview Trenton Railroad is reestablishing the railroad crossing at Jefferson at the north side of the McCall Steel site. And I think that's something that the township should take a close look at. I'm a member of the EPA Environmental Protection Agency, McCall Steel Community Advisory Group, and there are several other islanders that are on that group as well. And we had a meeting in May, and it was disclosed by the EPA and Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and, or Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle, they call it, that there was, in fact, some hazardous runoff from the McCall Steel site that went onto Jefferson and ultimately went into Mongawagin Creek and caused a small fish kill that fortunately the riverkeeper, Bob Burns, brought to the attention of the EPA and Eagle because they themselves didn't even see that. So, you know, it's a situation there where we've been told all along that the maroon companies will not do any development on that site without prior approval from the EPA and Eagle, that whatever they do and modifications won't cause an environmental impact beyond, you know, what they're already known to have cleaned up and are planning to clean up. So, you know, it's kind of, it's a situation that needs a little more examination. I think that the township should really take a close look at that and make sure that you're participating in the EPA CAG so that you're on top of that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kathy Walker. Jade, Jade, you'll get your turn. You'll get your turn.
26051 Thorpe Court. I just want to, I was very impressed with Susan tonight, our policewoman. What a great idea. We have the oldest, in the Downriver area, the oldest community, and there are a lot of people who need that, and I had no idea it existed. So, kudos to her, kudos to the police department. It was wonderful, and thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, and that, you know, I'm actually sorry to hear that you didn't know about it because we thought...
I usually know what's going on. Yeah, I was surprised.
Yeah, it's been out for a while, so that's why I asked the question, can we do better publicizing?
What you should do is social media. And I think that would help a lot because I didn't see anything. If it's been going on for two years, now I know it was when Tim was dying, but usually I hear stuff. But anyways, it was a great...
All right.
I'll ask them, Jim, to do that again. We did use social media at first, and then we did a mailing. I'm sorry that you didn't know about it, Kathy.
It's okay. Now I know, but...
I know.
It's great.
Yeah.
We'll do better.
We'll keep getting the word out there as best we can. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving?
I've got one.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there. Go ahead, Mr. Freo.
All right, just one tonight from Mary Brezhnahan, Bellevue.
Hi, Mary.
At the last meeting, a resident and I had made a comment regarding a couple of ordinances. It was greatly appreciated to, it was greatly appreciated to get some feedback from the board. Special thanks to Jamison Jaeger and Joe Porzarelli. However, I was extremely disappointed in Uta O'Connor's input on the situation. She had reminded the board that we should not be responding to public comment, or we could be here all night. Her comment was cold and unexpected. We can't ask questions, so we are limited to making a comment with no interaction from the board. The response from the board does not have to be long or debatable, but some kind of reaction would be greatly appreciated. Being heard and listened to adds comfort to the concern of the citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brezhnahan. That's it? That's all you got? Okay. Now, we'll move on to... Oh, Bob's...
No, he's just leaving.
Yeah, yeah.
He always leaves clerk's report.
Oh, now, now. Good night, Bob. All right, clerk's report.
Yeah, he's gone now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of things from the clerk's office. As you, if you are on the absent voter ballot list, you will have received your absent voter ballot application in the mail in the last couple of weeks. Please return those to our offices, and we will issue you your absent voter ballot. You can also request your application by emailing the clerk's office, phone calling the clerk's office, coming into the clerk's office, or just plain waiting to vote on Election Day, which is August 8th in 2023. As Mr. Carmison pointed out, festival was a big success this year. The Community Recreation Committee and Commission and the Island Fest crew met today at 6:30 downstairs. It unfortunately coincided with our closed session, so I was not able to attend. But I know that we will be getting an update from them soon. In the meantime, I would just like to throw out a huge thank you and applause to Chad Novak, who put the team together that ran what looked like a very successful festival. And he brought together a large group of volunteers from all walks of life, all walks of the township. We had the Community Recreation Commission members and their families volunteer. Suzie Honkala brought along her builders' club from the high school. There were miscellaneous residents who saw us cleaning up on Sunday who actually just decided to pitch in and help out. So we can comfortably say it took a village. And I think Chad was very excited about the funds that were earned through the carnival and through some of the other activities that will go again toward, you know, paying for next year's festivals. So, no tax dollars were harmed in this process. And it was just very delightful to see everybody. The parade was a big turnout. We had good weather, touch wood. It was just a very exciting event. The Community Rec Commission will meet again in July. We did not have a June, official June, meeting. But some of the things on our agenda to talk about upcoming are, again, facilities, maintenance issues, and so forth. So if you're interested in any of those, please come join us, and they meet here in this conference room. So that's it from the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Uta. Mr. Nadeau's treasurer's report, again. He's not here. Derek just put an asterisk that I get his next check. I do have some comments from him. He sits on the Airport Commission and the DPS Commission. The DPS meeting, which would be tomorrow normally, is moved to June 21st so that they may act on some bids, and maybe you can just give a little more on that when you do yours. So the main thing being that there is no DPS tomorrow. It will be moved to the 21st. As to the airport, there is no June meeting for the Airport Commission. Work on the taxiway is starting June 19th, which is a week from today. The Blimp will be here from June 29th through July 3rd. I believe that's the Rocket Mortgage Gulf event that they'll be here for, but it will be docked down here. On July 15th, there will be an event, History on Wheels, which is actually about planes, and there will be some planes, old vintage planes brought in from the Yankee...
Air Force?
Air, uh, for...
Air Museum.
Air Museum. And on August 12th, they will, the airport will be hosting a vintage market, and that is Mr. Nadeau's report. So, with that, we move to trustee reports. Mr. Bletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Couple of matters. Number one, I have the privilege of sitting on Greenway's open space. On Saturday, June 10th, we had a ribbon cutting for the new Ferry Gage Trail. It replaces the old trail, and we had special guests there for the ribbon cutting, including John Keim, who was the field manager and was instrumental in making that trail as good as it is. He does just a terrific job. Derek Thiel, who came in as the township manager and facilitated all of the work that was on there, worked with Charlie Campo and others in order to make that possible. Charlie did some ditching for us that will keep the water off the trail. We're hoping that that has some long-term effects. Also, wanted to thank Supervisor Budney for coming and making some warm remarks, as well as Clerk O'Connor. Your support, Madam Clerk and Mr. Supervisor, and other members of the board is instrumental in making this happen. The same for both John and Derek and the crew that worked on it, and thank you for all your support in this. Second matter is the Meridian open space. You will have noticed, next time you drive by, there's a large dent in the probably 100 yards worth of, or more, of wood chips that were there. The team has started to extend the update, upgrade of the existing trail. I think that is best summarized. I had an opportunity to speak with Rotary approximately a week ago, and Kevin Flavin was there, and Kevin indicated how special that that trail is with the upgrades, where he and his wife were able to enjoy it, and was very, very, very big compliment in terms of how we're using, how we're coming along. And I do see more people there using the trails than we ever have before. And in fact, during the ribbon cutting, we had a couple with their dog coming in from Gage Road. Tried to include them in the picture. They just said, no, we don't want to be part of photography, and but they did compliment and recognize how smooth that is going. The third thing is that I too want to thank Chad Novak and his volunteer crew for all the work that they did. Greg, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said it was real good. Just an excellent program, and I have the privilege of sitting next to the man whose family started the Azalea Festival. And that has been a long time in the making. Chad, thank you and all your volunteers for the work that you do. It's a long weekend, but it was very successful. Fourth, I would also like to take time to recognize a coming birthday for one of the members of the Grozeal community that has been here for a very long time. Mildred Miles is celebrating a 90th birthday on June 19th. We all remember her husband, Gordon, and certainly familiar with so many members of the family. Mildred will be 90 a week from today. If you get a chance and want to call her up and wish her a happy birthday, I'm sure she would be very excited for that and certainly is well deserved. Finally, I want to talk about the hiring process that we went through for the new fire chief. It was, as Uta said, a rather, rather difficult process. She's previously said that it's an awful lot like watching sausage being made. I do want to note that the process that was employed, there was sporadic criticism within social media that this was the Budney Committee. This was an attempt to take away the fire chief position from somebody locally and to include only outsiders. I want to say that, as I've said before, I don't believe that that's a fair and accurate representation. There was an exhaustive, and I've spoken on it previously, an exhaustive process for 28 applications. And when the application process yielded six and then two finalists, John had put in his request to be considered. And in many places that I have seen and employers, I know that they would look at it and say, you're too late, you're not going to be able to do this. I would recognize that Mr. Budney and certainly Ms. O'Connor had said that we need to have an interview process. Let's hear from John. And I could not imagine a process that was more fair in terms of providing to the community. And the only thing I care about, I don't care where you are from, what sex you are, what color you are, or anything else. I simply want what's best for the community. And when it came time to step up and have an interview with John, Uta's idea, Jim supported it, and it was unanimous consent of this township board that John should be interviewed. And I think we have the very best person right now for the position, and I just want to recognize that in light of all of the criticism and comments that have been made out there previously. Jim, I want to thank you for what I think is a very fair process. And the final analysis is stepped back, included somebody that while he was late to the game, certainly is somebody that interviewed, interviewed well, and I just want to thank you for helping, both of you for helping to make that possible. And that concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you, Carl. Kyle?
Yes, thank you. I sit on the Planning Commission, which meets on an as-needed basis. It currently doesn't have a scheduled meeting coming up, but I did want to note the comments from the last meeting that I was not present at around certain ordinances, and I've definitely started to look into that with Derek and Ross, and definitely want to pursue that. And Jamison, I know you pursued them before, so definitely want to make sure that we, if not take some action on, just look at them very closely and see what next steps we can take on those ordinances. So I'll say that. On the fire chief process, well, not process, I'll just say, you know, I spoke at the last meeting about this. I, I'm just happy at the outcome that we came to. I'll say that to start. I was really happy with Clerk O'Connor's suggestion at the Fire Commission meeting that we do an interview of John Camilleri. I watched that interview. It was really well done, I felt, not just for the answers, but for everything that it revealed about the fire department, what issues it has currently, what needs to be done. I'm really happy that that's all out there in public now. I know we've spoken about some of it at different board meetings and such, but now it's there, and we, a lot of us know what the challenges are. The public does, too. There was very clear calls for support, I felt, from John Camilleri, including for volunteers. So I hope the public hears that and hears the needs of the fire department. And really happy that we got to a 6-0 vote tonight and 7-0. I know Dave's not here, but expressed the support. So that shows that John has the support he needs right now to tackle some of these challenges, and just knows that I, that... now to tackle some of these challenges, and just knows that I, that yeah, I want to express my support as a trustee to do everything we can to support him in tackling those challenges. So yeah, again, I'll say that there. I also, I wrote earlier about Clerk O'Connor, very, very early on, talking about John Camilleri staying on to tackle some of these challenges. I know her speaking to me about that early on gave me confidence that that could be an outcome in this process, and made me feel less worried about it than I saw some people in the public about it. So there's things that happen behind the scenes that not everyone sees, and that not everything can be given credit for, but I was happy that, of the outcome that we came to with that. Finally, Greg stole my thunder a little bit on, on the former McClough site. It's something I followed as a resident for a really long time, but I had, I had seen that what ended up being acidic runoff ran into the McWhagon Creek, which from my understanding happened around the 2010s, and a motorcyclist fell in there and got chemical burns from it. There was a fish kill from it. I'd seen reports of it from the Riverview Residence Board. There's an activist there, Brian Webb, who does a lot of this work around McClough. And honestly, was surprised we didn't hear anything else about it. I thought Eagle was going to send out alert about it. They didn't. I finally got a chance to watch the, the community advisory group that Greg is a part of, and then finally made the connection. I knew that the Riverview-Trenton Railroad was, was moving forward, but saw very clearly, and it was said in that meeting, that the construction there is part of what possibly led to that runoff going into the McWhagon Creek. And so those two things happening together, you know, I didn't, anyway, it just, it just makes me realize there's a lot of attention that we need to be paying to that area. There's that saying that's, I believe is true, "If you're not at the table, you're often on the menu." We, our former, I think our Chief Botry was supposed to have been on that community advisory group, and so I have questions about that. I know Joe and Jamison have offered to join there, but I do, I do think we need a, we need a Grozeal representative on there to be there and just to watch very closely what's happening there. The, that was the most serious, the acid runoff, but before, the EPA was talking about the testing they're going to be doing, both on the Trenton and on the Grozeal side, to see what's being, what's running off into the water from that McClough site and could be affecting us. So I've seen some of the testing from that, too. Yeah, there, we all know this. There are issues in our river and right along our shorefront. So it's just something I'm going to be watching really closely. Glad that Greg wrote or spoke on it, and yeah, want to look into how that happened and why, why it wasn't, you know, why that, they didn't catch that before permits were issued or whatever happened, because it's just very, very concerning to me to see, see what happened there recently. And I will conclude my report there.
Thank you, Kyle.
Jim, can I make one comment on what?
You absolutely can. Go ahead.
Instead of waiting for mine, and Kyle, just so...
You happen to be next.
Oh, I saw that.
Yeah, go ahead.
My mistake. Kyle, also, so you know, about 10 days ago, I did contact an individual. I would like to join that CAG from McClough. There's a woman that handles that from a company, and I have all my contact info to her. I noticed that recently, I apologize, not recently, previous, there was an individual from Grozeal that their name was on there, but they were not attending, so I've asked to be put on there from that, for that Citizens Action Group, and I don't know if the board, I guess it's up to the board if you want me to, to do it representing the township. Is there somebody that, it is what it is?
I would have, I mean, I personally, I'm not going to speak for everybody else, but I'd have no problem you being either way, whether you're representing the township or you're doing it as a resident and just reporting back to the board, whatever works best for you.
Okay. She is going to get back to me to see if we need a resolution.
Okay.
I think you do need a resolution.
And if, if you want a representative, that's up to you guys.
Yeah.
If you want a representative, we need a resolution. If you don't...
Obviously, if you're just a resident.
Yeah, if I'm just a resident being...
There wouldn't be, yeah.
But I would like to, I'm very interested in that, and I would like to be on that for the future.
And they probably even have a pro forma resolution that we can fill out and adopt.
I will let you know then.
All right. Thanks, Joe. And, oh, by the way, is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I sit on the Police Commission, and they meet third Tuesday every month in this boardroom, 7 o'clock. And unfortunately, I had a prior township commitment. I could only stay for about 15 minutes on the last meeting, and there will be no formal report for that. So I would like to thank, though, a couple of groups and people for the Island Fest. I was there Saturday night, and it was packed, and it really was a very good turnout for Saturday night. I wanted to thank the Police Department, the Police Reserves, for keeping us safe down there, where there was police officers everywhere you looked. That was, I really think that that's the correct way to be. And I want to thank the fire department. They were down there also. In case there's any issues, they could have responded immediately to it. And the last I want to thank is Chad Novak. I talked to him for a little bit that night, and as you know, or maybe some of you don't know, that our rec director did resign previous to this, a few weeks back. And Chad, and Uta, correct me if I'm wrong, but he's kind of was the lead person of Island Fest. Chad was the lead person, and he put as many hours in the weekend as you would put in a week at work, and he definitely did a great job in coordinating and putting things together, making things happen. And you wouldn't believe how much work there is with just something like that. It's nonstop. It's, it's a 40-hour weekend. And Chad, I want to thank you personally for that. You did a great job, and it turned out well. There was no issues, no, you know, major issues at all. And I just want to thank those groups and yourself for that. I'm good.
Can I just add?
Quickly, yes.
Just as a point of, Chad does this whole thing as a volunteer. He's not a paid employee of the township. He was, he was previously the chairperson of the festival commission, which got rolled into the Community Rec Commission, of which he is a chair, but this is definitely a project that he has been and continues to be very passionate about. But, and I did want to say, our former rec director, Kim O'Farrell, was here for the Island Fest. She helped. She was one of the volunteers. She helped organize the parade and, and helped out on a number of different levels throughout the weekend. So we have a very loyal and very strong team of volunteers. Well, she's still a resident in the community.
Yes, yeah.
Well, then I, you know what? I want to say this upfront. I do apologize to you, Kim. I thought in your resignation that it was turned over, I was advised that Chad would be handling Island Fest, so.
Chad was.
And he did. I mean, that, that was not wrong, because Kim is now employed somewhere else.
I got it.
But she came back as a volunteer and to participate as a resident. This is still her community, and she loves, well, she loves her, her former commission, and she loves the work that we do here. So I, I didn't want to cast a shadow on what you said. I'm simply, I wanted people to know that she was here and that she had every intention of staying to help out, and, and that she and Chad worked very closely together on Island Fest, but that this is his baby. You know, this is...
Understood.
That can't be emphasized enough. Joe, you were absolutely right. I mean, he, even if Kim were still here, it would have, it would have been Chad's baby, so.
I didn't want to downgrade anybody. That was not my, I was trying to upgrade him, so thank you for straightening that out.
Is that it, Joe?
Yep.
Thank you. Jamison, if you would, please.
All right. Good evening. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission would typically meet this Thursday on the 15th. However, that meeting is canceled. The Zoning Board of Appeals does have a meeting on Thursday, the 20, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, the 27th this month, for anyone that's particularly interested in zoning appeals or has any interest in the particular case they'll be reviewing. I'm not going to heap any more praise on Chad. He did a great job. I think, I think he knows that, and we know that, and we, we really appreciate the hard work he puts in. There was a lot of volunteers at Island Fest, and they all made a significant difference. I know my family was out here, well, both days, and then Jade and I were out here the second day, and we had a great time, and all of the volunteers were, you know, braving the sun and suffering right alongside the residents. The difference was, all they had to drink was water. So I do want to have a particular thank you to the lady working the east gate over here on the far end of the airport. She did a great job, and actually, there were some kids trying to steal some stuff from bicycles, and she was not having it. So honorary citizen of the, of the meeting, maybe. And then regarding the comments that Kyle had made, I think it's important to remember that we're, we're not just part of Downriver, but we're actually in the river. So the way anything goes around us, as far as Downriver and development, or, you know, switch from commercial to heavy industry, or revitalization of heavy industry, has a significant impact on our, on our quality of life here on the island, as far as air quality, water quality, soil quality. So I think it's great that Joe wants to join the community action group or advisory group, and I think he's going to do a great job for us, keeping us informed. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jamison. Derek, if you will?
Just a couple of items this evening. Just to update you, the recreation manager position is currently posted. I believe it closes on the 15th of June. So far, we've gotten probably about 20 applications, 20-plus applications for that position, so there has been a very good response to that posting. The recreation staff over at the rec department have been doing a great job in the interim without a director, so special cred to Annette and Mark with regards to the, the work they've been doing, and also Brian. They're keeping things together and working to make sure that the residents have a vibrant recreation program until we have a replacement for Ms. O'Farrell. Couple of quick updates with regards to the roads project. They are currently working on Horse Mill and West River Road. That work should be done probably about the beginning of July. With the addition of Church that you added via the change order this evening, they'll be doing Church right around, right around the same time that they're working on West River Road and Horse Mill. Most of those road projects that are currently being worked on and will be worked on over the next month and a half will be single-lane closures, so that shouldn't lead to any significant traffic backups. While we were in the meeting this evening, I did text Chief Carmack with regards to the, the charge. It was for a coyote that is the coyote. They are going to be using that as an instructive, instructive tool to help educate the general public, and my understanding is the funds for that were donated. So although we had to pay, we were, we had received a previous donation for that taxidermy work. So just wanted to give you that update to make sure that your question was answered. Back to the roads. Horse Mill and West River and Church will be June 5th through July 6th or thereabout. Bellevue, east of Mancha, or I'm sorry, east of Meridian, and East River Road Parkway to Manchester will be in the beginning of July to the mid, to the end of July. East River Road, Grow to Meso Island Bridge will be in the beginning of August, so August 7th through the 22nd. And then South Point, the intersection at South Point and Swan Island, and the stretch of road by the wastewater treatment plant that you authorized this evening will be in the end of August. There are going to be a variety of intersections that will be worked on. Those will be towards the tail end of the project, and those are going to be Grow Road at East River Road, South Point at Grow, the West River Road ramp, right at the intersection of West River Road, that intersection's going to be reworked. And then Bellevue and Meridian, that's going to be an additional intersection that'll be reworked under the project. So that'll happen towards the tail end, like the end of August, beginning of September. All of that information about when that work is scheduled is on our website. Brian's got it up on there under Summer Construction Projects for Roads, so review that for exact dates. And they are subject to change depending upon scheduling and weather conditions, so don't take those dates verbatim, but they're going to be, that work is going to be around those dates. As the supervisor had mentioned earlier, the DPS Commission did move their DPS meeting from, I believe, tomorrow to the 21st, and that's to accommodate the opening and review of a concrete bid. So we're going to be doing right around about a million dollars' worth of concrete work within the township, so not all of our efforts and funding is put towards asphalt work. We're also going to be doing concrete work this summer, so we needed time to be able to have the engineers review those bids, make a recommendation from the DPS Commission on the 24th to the board for your consideration the end of this month. So we hope to get that contract let, to try to get the majority of the work done from a concrete standpoint before the beginning of school in the fall. So that is what DPS is doing and what you will see out of them in the next couple of weeks. As was mentioned earlier, you know, a lot of volunteers for Island Fest. Thanks to everybody that put that on. It was a great event, great fireworks, great entertainment, and I appreciate everything that everybody did to put that on, as everybody had mentioned this evening. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Yeah, again, there's going to be a lot of, lot of, lot going on on the island this year, this summer with, and for the next couple of years in the summer with the road work that's being done, but I think everybody will enjoy as this work gets done. You get to use it immediately. You don't have to wait around. And I, I just am really happy and pleased with the program, and I'm pleased that, to see we're going forward with everything. Just to start off, I'd like to answer Greg's question. He was asking about the report from the engineering company. The last time I talked to the director, that report, they still had not gotten, because I had asked too, that I, you know, I would, we would like to see it also, and they hadn't gotten it yet. And along those lines, we are actually at, at the director's request. I wanted to have a meeting with him. He, he wanted to make sure that if we, if we have this meeting, that his engineers would be added to answer our questions, all the projects on Grozeal, as well as, as well as the Parkway Bridge and the, the five piers and that weren't done before, what's, you know, everything that's going on, the speed limit that has been in question on it. He knows that that's going to be a topic. So we're just waiting. He has been out of town for, over these last few weeks. He's been all over the place, so I'm waiting for a, a date for us. And on my list is, because Greg, as you point out, they, they absolutely did say that they were going to meet with the residents of Grozeal, and we will be pushing them on that. So that's a quick update on, on that. DDA, Downtown Development Authority, meets June 22nd, the fourth Thursday of the, the month. And I will, I don't want you to get more words than Uda, but as far as I know, the burn ban is still in effect, so please, no fires, whether you have a metal container or a fire pit or whatever. It's not just, just little fires on the ground that you might have dug a pit. It's any fire until further notice, and we did put a push notice out on that. I don't know, I believe that's also on the website, so you can just keep checking back there, or if you get the push notices, you'll find out when that's up. Wayne County has a household hazardous waste collection event. It will be in Dearborn this Saturday, the 17th, from 8 to 1 o'clock at Henry Ford College, 5101 Evergreen Road in Dearborn, Michigan. Also, this Thursday, DDA's Island Nights, be the first of, I believe, three Island Nights that they will have. It's from 6 to 9 on McComb. And the highlight of this, this week's event will be the fact that the muralist for, that is doing the mural on the hardware store will be there, and, and you can stop by and watch his work and talk to him about the mural. The mural will be a, the bullet mustang from the old days. The following two Island Nights, each, each one will have the, another mural involved... involved. One will be on Zubkey Plumbing on their wall, and the other one will be on Lloyd's on their wall by Kroger. So each one will have, have that highlight. Again, it's from 6 to 9, up and down McComb. There will be food trucks and music and other things going on. So if you're not doing anything on a Thursday night, stop by McComb. I thought I had one other thing. Was it? I, I, not to belabor the point, but I, I too wanted to talk about what was called, the word messy was used, and I will say I disagree with that, because I think people are missing the point that our, our, our team and the interviews and all that was perfectly okay. It was perfectly legal, no problem with that. We're following, quite frankly, it's in our P and P, which is Policies and Procedures, that, and we follow that. When it's turned over to the commission, the commission's job is to make a recommendation to us. They do not have the constraints of only looking at what that group gives them. So anyone that thinks maybe John was not put in as an applicant or as part of that 28 process, being that we're a government entity, this is a little bit of where we differentiate. That, that, that commission has the right to look at whoever they want and make a recommendation of whoever they want, and that is what they did. They absolutely did, did nothing wrong with that recommendation. It does kind of, it certainly, you probably wouldn't see something like that in the private sector, but we're not the private sector. So that is one thing you have to go up against. But, and being government, it does take us a little longer to do things, but I actually think everything moved along. And so I just wanted to mention that, that certainly the fire commission did, did what they were supposed to do. And with that-
Jim, one question, if I may, regarding the DDA?
Yes, sir.
You've indicated that there are murals that are being put up on the side of Zubkey and the hardware.
Yes.
Public funding for those. Any township dollars being spent on that?
Just DDA funds. That is, you know, that's out of their budget. No, no funds from, from the general fund or any, anywhere else.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other, if not, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed?
None.